Please rise for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. It should be public, which is one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening, everyone. It is Monday, November 22, 2021. I am looking around. Donovan Wales will not be here this evening. We do have one new member. I want to welcome Jessica to Town Council.
Hi, Ron.
And so there will be eight of us this evening. Third item, election of temporary chairman of the town council. Are there any nominations?
Mr. Chair?
Ms. LaPellis.
I nominate Jonathan Formicella for temporary chairman of town council.
My second.
Second by Sean O'Rourke. Are there any other nominations for temporary chairman of the town council? Hearing none. Any other discussion? Hearing none. Going to call for a vote on this matter. On the nomination of Jonathan Formicella as temporary chairman of the town council, all those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, that passes 8-2-0. Thank you, everyone. Our next item on the agenda is election of chairman of the town council. Are there any nominations? Ms. LaPellis?
I nominate Jonathan Formicella for chairman of the town council.
Second.
Second by Sean O'Rourke. Are there any other nominations? Hearing no other nominations, is there any other discussion? Hearing no discussion, going to call for a vote on this matter. All those in favor of electing Jonathan Formicella as chairman of the town council, please say aye.
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 Against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes 8-2-0. I want to thank everyone for their confidence in me as we continue this new term and try to do what's best for the people of Monroe. Item five, election of vice chairman of the town council. I'd like to nominate Enid LaPellis as vice chairman of the town council. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Terry Rooney. Are there any other nominations?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Mauer?
I'd like to nominate DeeDee Martin as vice chairman of the town council.
Mr. Mauer has nominated Ms. Martin to be vice chairman of the town council. Is there a second?
Aye.
Second by Jessica. How do you pronounce your last name?
Oh, Katuska.
Katuska?
Yep.
Thank you. Second by Ms. Katuska. Are there any other nominations? Joshon?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Mauer?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. As we have in the past, we would like to nominate to have a minority representation per chair, co-chair, vice chair, sorry, vice chair, in the spirit of bipartisanship and forwarding the idea of unity and the between the parties as well as a council as a whole. And Ms. Martin has been on the council for quite some time, has lots of experience. She's more than qualified for the role, and I think it would be a good faith showing on the part of all council members to show to the town the unity between the parties.
Thank you, Mr. Mauer. Is there any other discussion? Hearing no other discussion, I'm going to call for a vote on the nomination of Ms. Martin as vice chair. All those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
All those against, please say nay.
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 Nomination fails. I'd like to call for the nomination, the vote on the nomination of Enid LaPellis as vice chair of the town council. Any other discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Mauer?
Thank you to the council for the consideration on the other nomination. I will say that we have the utmost faith in Ms. LaPellis as vice chair, and she certainly has our support.
Thank you, Mr. Mauer. Any other discussion? Hearing no other discussion, I'm going to call for a vote on this matter. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes 8-2-0. Congratulations, Madam Vice Chair. Consent calendar, I am going to pass the consent calendar as presented, hearing no objections. I'm going to ask that communications, A through P, be incorporated into the minutes of our meeting. Public participation. At this time, I am going to begin with those who are in town council chambers. Is there any member of the public that would like to participate at this meeting? In chambers. One more time, anyone in town council chambers would like to participate at this? Seeing none, hearing none, I'm going to turn to our digital platform. Is there anyone that is here either by telephone or by computer or iPad that would like to participate during public participation? Please remember to unmute your microphone. One more time, is there anyone here digitally or via phone that would like to participate in public participation? Hearing none, seeing none, I'm going to close public participation for this evening. Appointments. Mr. Rooney?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I'd like to make a motion that this council appoint Michelle Orr of 12 Marsh Pond Lane to the Board of Ethics, fill in a vacancy for a term ending January 1, 2022.
Second.
Second by Vice Chair LaPellis. Discussion, Mr. Rooney?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Michelle's lived in Monroe for nine years. Michelle works as vice president, senior loan officer at an SBA lender. Her 22 years of commercial lending to small business nationwide has given her skills and experience that will serve on our Board of Ethics well.
Thank you very much, Mr. Rooney. Is there any other discussion?
Mr. Chair, we did meet with Michelle tonight at LNA, and she reached a 3-0 consensus to come to council tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. Any other discussion on the nomination of Michelle Orr to the Board of Ethics? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote on this matter. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes 8-2-0.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
A brief question. Mr. Rooney, did you, may I address Mr. Rooney?
I would prefer you go through the chair.
Through the chair to Mr. Rooney. Do, did you say who this appointment is replacing?
There's a vacancy because previous there was Norman Rand Court, and they're only allowed to serve two terms.
Okay, so it's just open.
It's a vacancy.
Okay, thank you.
You're welcome.
All right.
Moving on to action items. This evening, typically the chair has the discretion to assign committees, and this evening I will be only assigning one committee. The other committees will be decided during our December meeting. And this evening, I do have a couple nominations. I'm going to appoint Terry Rooney as town council liaison to the police department. Councilmember Rooney will also continue his service on the EMS building committee as that was a resolution of the town council, so he will remember, remain a member of that This evening, there will not be any nominations to finance, education, health, and public safety matters. That will, that committee will be assigned at our first meeting in December. There will be no nominations on the town council committee on planning zoning, public works, and park and recreation matters. That will be assigned at our December meeting. I am going to nominate Mr. Mauer, Mr. Reed, and myself to town council committee on legislative and administrative matters, which is critical to the functioning of town council for our December meeting, as it is a requirement for most of our work on town council that it first go through LNA. So that is the reason why I'm only nominating one committee this evening. Strategic planning, I will have nominate, I will appoint members of the strategic planning committee at the December meeting. EMS building committee. Is there any update, Mr. Rooney? EMS.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. As far as EMS is concerned, you will find in your packet that a financial report has been added to the consent calendar. We will be adding that approximately once a month. And as far as the project, everything is going as planned, really no hiccups. There's a full building permit has been provided, and everything's working out very well. There are no hangups. Things are very smooth. If anybody's been by the site, there's been a lot of things that have been done. A retaining wall has been built. The parking lot has been widened, some rock removals, treatment was done, and then they're working inside the building. I believe the asbestos abatement is nearly 100%. If it's not 100% at this point, Vision Electric's been there doing electrical, so the project's going very, very well. We're just praying right now because we've had rebar on the site for the last three, four weeks, so we're just hoping to get the concrete out of the ground before snow flies. So that's, that's the, that's the sticky part, because once you get the concrete poured, then we can continue to build. So getting out of the ground is sticky with this weather, but it looks like it's going to work out. So other than that, that's all I have, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Rooney. Open space and preservation and acquisition committee, Mr. O'Rourke?
We have not met since our last meeting.
Thank you very much, Mr. O'Rourke. First selectman's update.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I'll start out with a very brief COVID update. As much of the state is experienced, there's a slight increase in cases, which we've seen here in Monroe as well. We're averaging about two and a half new cases per day. We are conducting booster clinics. We've conducted one targeted for residents aged 65 and older. We conducted a initial vaccination clinic for children aged five to 11 with some, some help and support from Superintendent Kazza at Monroe Public Schools in terms of outreach and scheduling for that. We appreciate it. We are conducting an adult booster clinic for Monroe Public Schools this week, and we will be hosting another adult booster clinic for all residents next week. That last clinic will be an open clinic scheduled through VAMS. More information will come out later this week. And as always, as I say, residents who are looking for other vaccine providers, we encourage them to look at the COVID-19 page, and there are links on there to find multiple providers in Monroe and throughout our region that are offering vaccination, whether it's initial or booster. An update on the Pepper Street project, as I agreed to give you from the last meeting. So milling and paving has been substantially completed for the majority of the project area in advance of the winter season, as we had previously indicated would occur. There are some small temporary patches of striping tape that's on the road currently to mark the lanes. That is simply there in advance of line painting, which will be done in the near future. There's one section between Jockey Hollow and Garter Road that is still unpaved. That is because utilities are actively moving a water main there, and the primary contractor will be installing a culvert in that area. So there will actually be some increased activity in that one small section over the next several weeks, and as that wraps up, there will be pavement there once, once that gets wrapped up. An update on the Wolf Park Field Project, preliminary analysis from TPA did indicate that among all the access points that we had previously identified, the two that were highlighted previously, two and five, are the viable options that they recommend that we continue to review. I have, I'm still waiting for a more detailed cost estimate analysis from TPA for those two options, and once that's complete, I will refer it to the Parks and Rec Commission for their input and recommendations prior to further consideration by coming to town council. The Parks and Rec Department has received a donation, which you actually was on your consent calendar this evening, but I, I just wanted to highlight that we have six diaper-changing stations that were donated by the maker of Pampers for use at our public restrooms at Wolf Park, and I just wanted to acknowledge and thank Ms. Oroz, who took the initiative when she found that that opportunity was there and applied for this in-kind grant. So we have that addition to our park. The Monroe Playground Foundation has told me that their efforts are moving on very well, and they will be sharing some very exciting news in the very near future. I've been working with town departments and the town attorney to finalize a draft of a memorandum agreement, as we said, that we'll have to come back to this council just to, you know, just to memorialize how the donation will work and all the complexities that will kind of go along with it, but I'm excited that we will be able to present that if not at the, hopefully at the next meeting of town council. And last but certainly not least, the annual budget process is about to start once again. I will be sending out my annual budget memo to department heads and other officials that have budgetary responsibility this week. And that is my report for tonight. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Kellogg.
Mr. Chairman?
Mr. Mauer?
Two quick things. First off, Mr. Selectman, I just wanted to let you know that a couple of the residents who had reached out to me about Pepper Street that I had brought up at the last meeting reached out again and did let me know that the areas that they were talking about were paved and were much easier to progress over, so they wanted me to pass on their thanks, so I, now.
Thank you. Excellent.
Also, Mr. Chairman, I just wanted to ask quickly, is it your intent to continue both a councilperson, LaPellis, and myself on the Board of Pensions, as I'm not positive as to whether or not we'll have a meeting? I don't think we have a meeting before our next one.
I believe it will be in January.
I think so.
So I will, I will have the nominations in December, at our December meeting.
Thank you. On your direction, if an emergency meeting were called?
Yes.
Would, who would show up as liaison?
We'll have a special meeting before then.
Okay. Thank you.
Closing action items, there is no, there are no matters of unfinished business this evening. New business, item A, acceptance of the following donations that individually exceed $500. Do I, do I hear a motion to accept the following donation?
So moved.
I, I $10,000 from the Monroe Rotary Club for the EMS facility project, and $2,000 from Patrick Kroll for Children's Department programs in memory of Connie and Jack Kroll. I believe I heard Ms. LaPellis.
Seconded.
There's a second by Mr. Mauer. Mr. First Selectman, I think we have a few people here tonight.
We do here tonight, and if you will indulge me, I'd like to invite the Rotary Club to come up and make a presentation, say a few words, and help us introduce this. Please, please approach the podium.
Thank you. We do have a couple, a couple of members of Rotary. I'd just like to say, you know, obviously it's taken you a fair amount of time to do the EMS building, but we really appreciate what you've done, especially you, Terry, Ken. I mean, it's been years. So what Rotary's done, we obviously do a fair amount in town lately, but I wanted to present to EMS, I think two representatives of here, Captain Smith and Craig, who I'd like to have them receive this for the EMS building. Obviously, we've got several, this is $10,000 that the Rotary Club has earned through its efforts, through its golf tournament and other fundraising efforts, and you know how hard it is fundraising in this day and age, so we just appreciate what you guys come around.
Got to hold the check.
Really, second of the best. So thank you all for accepting it, and hopefully the building continues and snow doesn't progress. So good luck with it and good luck. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thanks to the Rotary, not only for the funds, which definitely we could use moving forward, and it would be a big asset to us as we move forward with the project, and hopefully within a year have it completed. But I also want to say thank you because not only are the funds important, but the public support means a lot to our members to show that the public appreciates what they do on a day-to-day basis to help make Monroe a safer community. So it's more than just this, as much as I like this. It's more than just this, is that show of support that, like I said, means a lot to us and keeps us motivated to continue to do what we do, keep our volunteers motivated. So thank you very much for this.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay. Well.
Yeah. Pulled out.
So take that to the bank.
I want to thank members of the Monroe Rotary Club for their very generous donations to the EMS facility project, and I'm sure all members of council feel the same. And we'd also like to thank Patrick Kroll for his very generous donation for the Children's Department programs. So any other discussion?
Mrs. Kroll was a teacher in one of the elementary schools, just, just so you know where probably the donation's partly coming from.
That's wonderful. Any other discussion?
I'll just echo your earlier comments. I want to thank the Rotary members who, you know, there was a very large fundraiser that was organized that raised this, this funds, and although I'm a member of Rotary, I can't say that I was really terribly involved in the planning of that event because my, my schedule did not allow me to do that. So I want to thank the other members of Rotary who really put in that hard work to, to, to really put together that fundraiser which raised these funds, which are intended to help support the training room that will be built at the new facility. And, and, and I do also want to just thank and acknowledge Mr. Kroll for giving that donation to the library in honor of his, his family, two individuals that were very precious to the Monroe community and will be missed. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. First Selectman. Any other discussion? Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote on the acceptance of the two donations. Those in favor, please say aye.
Aye.
Reed?
Kevin, you're muted.
All right, Mr. Reed.
Literally could not get off mute. This, this phone would not.
Thank you, Mr. Reed. All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes 8-2-0. New business, item B, Resolution 21-173 to Consider Act Upon a Resolution Regarding Epidemiology in Laboratory Capacity Supplement, ELC2 Enhancing Detection Agreement. Madam Vice Chair?
I move that the town council adopt Resolution 21-173. Resolve that Kenneth M. Kellogg, First Selectman of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the epidemiology and laboratory capacity supplement, ELC2 Enhancing Detection Cooperative Agreement, and any associated documents by and between State of Connecticut Department of Public Health for COVID-19 funding.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
Second by Jason Mauer. Discussion, Mr. First Selectman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So many, most of you will recognize this grant from earlier on during the pandemic, the original, which they called the ELC Cooperative Agreement. That was the first federal dollars that were provided to the Health Department to help support the pandemic response. They have come out now with this extension and supplement of that grant, which they are calling the ELC2 grant, which will now provide over $71,000 and extends the grant through July of 2023. Other than that, the, you know, the, the terms of the grant and the, the intended use of the funds are very substantially the same as what they are previously, and we'll be able to utilize this in the Health Department to continue supporting our, our emergency response and prepare in this effort.
Thank you very much, Mr. First Selectman. Is there any other discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Mauer?
Only that this was passed unanimously through LNA. We did discuss this, as well as, I'll just note for the record, items, I believe it was C and D on the consent calendar, as we didn't do an LNA update during the earlier part, but they were all discussed and approved unanimously through LNA.
Thank you, Mr. Mauer. Any other discussion? Hearing no other discussion, I'm going to take a vote on this matter on the passage of Resolution 21-173. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes 8-2-0. New business, item C, Resolution 21-174, to consider and act upon a resolution regarding food rescue program partner agreement. Madam Vice Chair?
I move that the town council adopt Resolution 21-174. Resolve that Kenneth M. Kellogg, First Selectman of the Town of Monroe, is authorized to execute and deliver on behalf of the Town of Monroe the food rescue program partner agreement, and any associated documents by and between Connecticut Food Share for food donations.
Second.
Second by Mr. Mauer. Question, Mr. First Selectman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So I had mentioned at prior meetings that Food Share was in the process of updating all their agreements. I thought we had received all of them, however, they recently sent over this additional one, which is short and fairly self-explanatory in terms of being able to pick up food being donated at local establishments, i.e. grocery stores, and it's fairly straightforward, and we're obviously able to comply with it, and you have the town attorney's memo in this regard as well, and we'd like to obviously move forward so we can continue the program.
Thank you, Mr. First Selectman. Any other discussion?
Yeah.
Mr. Mauer?
Only that this was discussed by LNA and unanimously passed, but we can't.
Mr. Mauer, any other discussion? Hearing no other discussion, I'm going to call for a vote on this matter. All those in favor, passing Resolution 21-174, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes 8-2-0. Resolution 21-175, Consider and Act Upon a Resolution Regarding Licensorship of WMNR. Madam Vice Chair?
I move that the town council adopt Resolution 21-175. Resolve that Kenneth M. Kellogg, First Selectman of the Town of Monroe, during the term of his office, is hereby authorized to execute and submit on behalf of the town council any all filings and certification submissions to governmental or other regulatory agencies, including, without limitation, the Federal Communications Commission as necessary, and required to maintain any and all licenses owned and operated in the Town of Monroe for the purposes of and doing business as, and doing business as WMNR Fine Arts Radio.
Thank you, Madam Vice Chair. Is there a second?
Second.
By Mr. Mauer. Discussion, Mr. First Selectman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So as everyone's aware, WMNR is licensed to the town and under the ownership of the town council. There are routinely many filings that come up that are required for ongoing licensure that are often time-sensitive. These are always prepared with the assistance of special counsel for WMNR, which we have retained for many years, Foster Garvey. We are currently in the process of completing the filing for the eight-year renewal of the station, which is due December 1st. In, in reviewing this and some of the prior certifications that were required, I've worked with our, our town attorney to draft a resolution to ensure that I have express authorization on behalf of the council to make such filings. I'm asking that the resolution before you tonight, which would apply to, to this filing, would also apply to any future ones that may come up during my term. As, as always has been the case, they are fairly straightforward, often very technical. They are certifying information and procedure and administrative matters. Typically, there's no contractual obligations involved. As always, if there was anything that I felt, as we discussed in LNA, anything I felt was unusual or went beyond that scope that I was not comfortable with, I could bring to council in any, in any event. And I would always continue to report back to council any future filings that came up that were done on behalf of WMNR. So with that, I ask that the council move this forward so we can proceed with our, not only our eight-year renewal of licensure, but any other similar regulatory filings that come up in the next couple of years. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. First Selectman. Is there any other discussion?
Mr. Chair?
Mr. Mauer?
Only that this went through LNA. As the selectman noted, there was one section of discussion, just as an assurance from the selectman, that if something extremely unusual came up, that he would use his discretion to bring it back to council on something like that, which he did provide that assurance, and as such, it was passed unanimously onto council.
Thank you very much, Mr. Mauer. Any other discussion? Hearing no other discussion, I'm going to call for a vote on the passage of Resolution 21-175. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, this passes 8-2-0. Resolution 21-175, Consider and Act Upon a Resolution Regarding Licensorship of WMNR. Madam Vice Chair?
I move that the town council adopt Resolution 21-175. Resolve that Kenneth M. Kellogg, First Selectman of the Town of Monroe, during the term of
Hearing no nays, this passes eight to zero. Item E, Resolution 21-176 Consider Act Upon a Resolution Regarding Blanket Resolution for Employee Matters. Do I hear a motion, uh, to waive the reading of Resolution 21-176?
So moved.
Madam Vice Chair, with the motion, Mr. Rooney with the second. Any discussion on the waiver of the reading of this resolution? Hearing none. All for vote on this. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay. Hearing no nays, um, we will waive the reading. Excuse me. Um, next, uh, do I hear, uh, a motion to adopt Resolution 21-176?
So moved.
Second.
By Madam Vice Chair, second by Mr. Rooney. Discussion, Mr. First Selectman.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. So, uh, as we have done in the prior two terms, I'm asking the council, uh, consistent with our charter, uh, one of, uh, the duties of the First Selectman is to act as the Personnel Director for the Town and to deal with various employee matters, and, uh, as we've done for the last couple of terms, uh, ensure that, um, I've had, uh, authorization from the Town Council to enter into, uh, any written agreements that might be among the town, the employee, and the collective bargaining unit for matters that, um, are resolved in that fashion, um, the exception, uh, being those that are in litigation, uh, as is noted in the resolution.
Thank you, Mr. First Selectman. Is there any other discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Mauer.
Uh, only that this did pass unanimously LNA, uh, and also just a request of the clerk to be sure that since we did waive the reading of the, uh, resolution, that it be incorporated in its whole into the minutes of the meeting.
I believe the clerk will take care of that for us. Absolutely. Um, thank you very much, Mr. Mauer. Ms. Martin.
Um, yeah, I have a couple of questions.
Sure.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Um, Mr. Kellogg, if, if the council by charter has the power to approve contracts, then how can we by resolution give you the power to approve the contracts? Isn't that going, isn't that by resolution going against the charter?
I certainly am not the town attorney, however, the town attorney has, uh, provided his letter of opinion in this regard, um, which I think pretty clearly, uh, addresses the fact that this resolution would provide the count, the contractual execution authority, uh, to my office. Um, it's the same resolution that this council, I believe, passed unanimously, uh, both in 2019 and in 2017.
Right, I understand that. Um, but I still, I don't understand how the, if, if we approve contracts, now we're telling, giving you the authority to approve the contracts, which is taking authority away from the council. I, I have an additional question, if I could, please?
Your, your, the council is actually providing its authority to the First Selectman to deal with matters that are under the executive branch, specifically personnel matters, yes.
Providing, okay. Um, it says, or I believe in maybe in the opinion letter about if something was in litigation.
Mm-hmm.
Um, what about a threat of litigation? Is that under that same category that we're not?
The resolution, as stated, is matters that are in litigation.
In litigation, okay. Um, has?
We've been fairly successful in, to avoid that, so.
And that's, that's a very good thing. Have we ever, in your opinion, have we ever had, have you ever had a delay in resolution because a situation had to be brought to the council? A delay in personnel, understanding, I don't, I don't believe that the council should be involved in personnel issues per se. Do you see this as a delay in resolution?
Well, we have not experienced any delays because, as I said, both in 2017 and 2019, council passed this resolution to address those matters in a very, uh, efficient way. So I can't speak to what has not occurred. I mean, certainly there are matters that come up that can be time-sensitive.
And, and in your opinion, it would not be a issue to bring those matters to the council?
Uh, not in all cases, not in all cases. It may not be a time issue, but it's certainly, uh, looking to, uh, handle these, these matters in the most effective, uh, way and, and don't think, did not perceive that the council wanted to be involved in every personnel matter that needed to be resolved.
And I don't, I don't believe that. But I, I'm not sure that, that this is a swift and, and prudent way, swift perhaps, um, to accomplish that. Thank you, Mr. First Selectman. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Ms. Martin, any other discussion?
Mr. Chair.
Mr. Mauer.
Uh, Mr. First Selectman, it is the opinion from the letter of the town attorney that this does not violate charter, correct?
Correct.
Thank you.
Mr. Mauer, any other questions? Discussion. Hearing none, I'm going to call for a vote on the adoption of Resolution 21-176. All those in favor, please say aye.
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 All those against, please say nay.
Nay.
Any one nay, this passes. Public participation, matters of unfinished business this evening that remain unfinished. There are no unfinished matters of new business. No second public participation this evening during the screening. Eight to eight. Everyone, see you in December. Happy Thanksgiving.
Happy Thanksgiving.